All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski. Mrs. Koski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Move to approve the agenda and move Consent Agenda Item L to Consideration 7B.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. We have taken Consent Agenda Item L, made it Consideration Item 7B. Is there any other discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one absence today, Ms. Sarowski, who announced at the last council meeting that she would not be here, I believe, and please forgive me for my casual appearance tonight. I was out at the ribbon cutting for the new oversized checkerboard that's next to our library, and I don't know if it was the 90-degree heat or if it was the 11-year-old savant who beat me in chess, but it was a fair game and well played, but I'm still sweating a little bit after it. So, we're gonna catch my breath and we're gonna get on with the meeting here. And a quick plug, use our library, go check it out, it's an amazing new amenity. The next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, with the Labor Day holiday fast approaching, that city offices will be closed on Labor Day, that is Monday, September 2nd, and refuse collection will also be delayed one day throughout that entire week, so there'll be no collection on Monday, it will resume on Tuesday, and then Friday's collection will be on Saturday. So, if you have any questions about the schedule, feel free to see our website or call our Public Works Department at 446-2440. And with all the construction activity going on, I thought it'd be appropriate to give a quick update on some of our road construction projects. So, if I can draw your attention to the screen in front of you, first, let me just focus for a minute on major roads. We've had a lot of activity on our major roads. First, 14-mile road from Dequinder to Ryan has not started yet, but it will be starting in September. The bids have been opened, the bids came in very favorably, the work is all engineered and ready to go, so you can look forward to that worst stretch, a 14-mile road being completed, hopefully by November, certainly by this, by the end of the construction season. The good news on 18-mile road is that is ahead of schedule, so it is now complete, which is some minor punch list items remaining. 19-mile road is making steady progress. The first segment between Hayes and Sol has been completed, traffic is reopened, and the next segment from Sol to Shaner will commence and is expected to be completed toward the end of October. Now, the good news is with that section of 19-mile road, there'll be two-way traffic, unlike the first segment of 19-mile road, which was only eastbound traffic, so little less congestion there. Merrill Road is progressing nicely, we expect that will be completed by the targeted date of November. The Metro Parkway section by Van Dyke has already been completed. Shaner Road, as many have noticed, is well under construction now between Clinton River and just south of Canal. There'll also be major repair work on the area between Clinton River and the Plum Brook Drain that will also occur this year, with that section of roadway then being reconstructed or resurfaced, I should say, next year. Utica Road is complete. Hayes Road is now complete. There was a lot of concrete repair work on Hayes Road from 18-mile to Clinton River and Dequinder Road, which has seen also a lot of concrete replacement work between 14-mile Metro Parkway, that's just wrapping up, that's been ongoing since June. So, there's been a lot of major road resurfacing work going on across the city. Our neighborhood construction program is well underway and progressing very nicely. We believe we'll be finishing ahead of schedule. You can see all the streets in front of you that have been completely reconstructed this summer or currently in the final stages of such. We're also adding a road that will start in the next couple of weeks, and that is Fox Hill. That is from just east of Ryan Road to Mound Road, a really poor section that will be completely reconstructed. We're able to add that to the list this year. The other one that was just recently added is Mosh Drive, and that's from Metro Parkway to Greendale, so that's another add. That work will start in the next few weeks as well, but all of these neighborhood road projects will be finished up this construction season. And then, when you look at some of the resurfacing programs, those will be starting up very soon. Fox Hill Drive, this is a significant section, obviously, from Dequinder to Ryan Road, that'll be a complete resurfacing. Fortner Drive from 19-mile up to Wheaton, that's a nice add project, we were able to get that done this year, and then steer it from Canal to M59. So, those are the asphalt resurfacing jobs that will be finished up yet this season as well. So, in total, our road projects this construction season will have exceeded $24 million. And as you know, of that amount, about $3 million comes from the Safe Streets Millage, which will be up for renewal in November. The rest of the money comes from the General Fund, in some cases, some bonding, and also Public Act 51, and we're gonna be talking about some state road challenges that we have a little later on in the meeting. But I did wanna give an update on all the activity we have going on this summer, and we'll provide one more update as all the construction winds down, and we expect to be doing that in October. So, moving on, I wanted to introduce the city's HR benefit and manager coordinator, Kate Baldwin, who's going to give an update on the Sterling University Program that we started last year, and a number of items under that program that are really significant and we believe cutting-edge, and so we wanted to share that with everyone in the audience and at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the city council. I'm excited to be providing you an update on our Sterling University Program here at the city. One of the primary goals of Human Resources and city administration is to provide our employees the tools and resources that they need, excuse me, to provide the best services to our residents and businesses while also providing optimal customer service. Over the last two years, we have implemented new training initiatives that promise to revitalize and improve employee performance. The foundational Sterling U Program is a program that allows employees to participate both in classroom style and hands-on learning at each of our main departments. Employees visit our Department of Public Works, Police, Fire, and City Hall, which includes Parks and Rec and Library. To date, I'm happy to report that we have successfully completed three sessions. Two of the sessions were in 2018, and more recently, our spring 2019 session concluded. We've had over 170 employees complete the Sterling U Program. Sterling U allows employees to have a good, in-depth understanding of each of our critical functions and how they operate and how each department interacts with one another. By way of example, you can see in the photo in the lower right, we have employees from both PD and FD who are participating in a demonstration provided by the Water Department at DPW. In the top photo, Fire Chief Martin is showing some different techniques in which firefighters use the hose with different forms of, or various forms of fires. The Sterling U foundational program will run on an annual basis for all employees to participate. We are looking into implementing a condensed version for residents in the future. So, what exactly are employees saying about Sterling U? Displayed on the screen is some unsolicited feedback that we received from two employees who participated in this last spring session. While I won't read all of the detail, they both expressed how they enjoyed their Sterling U experience and how it left a positive impact on them. Feedback of the program is always encouraged and valued in order for us to continue improving and growing Sterling U. Some other feedback we received is to condense the sessions, so these sessions are a day-long, and the attendees attend four days, so sometimes it's hard to be pulled away for an entire day, but also to create a more interactive and hands-on experience during the City Hall portion. And of course, we get excellent feedback regarding PD and FD and DPW as well. So, how has Sterling U evolved? So, Sterling U has evolved into a much more progressive program, and as you may know, with this new fiscal year, we've implemented many training opportunities for our employees that now fall under our Sterling U, our signature Sterling U platform. Included under this platform is our one-day sabbatical, Lean Six Sigma, executive training leadership, and our learning management system, Knowledge City. And some of you may recall, we did present some of these new training initiatives during the 2019-2020 strategic planning session. The one-day sabbatical is an opportunity for employees to take a day-long training of their choice that will professionally enhance their skill set. To date, we've had 427 employees submit their formal sabbatical request, and at some point during this fiscal year, they'll take their sabbaticals. Some have already actually completed their sabbaticals. The average cost, that we wanted to note this, is $115 per employee. So, this is actually lower than what we had initially budgeted for, which was right around $150 per employee. Now, I'm gonna move on to Lean Six Sigma, so this is something that's sort of fresh, because we did recently announce our collaboration with Macomb Community College on our Lean Six Sigma Program during a press conference this past Friday. Over the last 10 months, leaders in the organization, the city, have been meeting diligently with members of Macomb Community College to framework a program that would allow employees of the city to be formally trained by an expert in lean. And for those of you that may not know, excuse me, Lean Six Sigma is a method to streamlining processes and efficiencies in a collaborative culture while reducing waste and processes. So, here at the city, we'll have a total of 40 employees who will participate in the program. All will go through a day-long white belt training, which consists of learning the fundamentals of Lean Six Sigma and sort of the basics, and of those 40 employees, roughly 20 will go through the green belt training, which consists of five days over a five-week period. And this green belt training is more in-depth, where employees can really drill down into the methodologies of Lean Six Sigma and apply those methodologies to specific projects or tasks here at the city. All employees participating in either the white belt or the green belt will receive a certificate of completion through Macomb Community College, and those that move on to completing the green belt will also have an opportunity to be formally accredited by the American Society of Quality, so they'll have a certification as a green belt. Just to note, some of the benefits associated with implementing Lean Six Sigma includes continuous improvement of processes, projects, or certain tasks, employee morale, increased efficiencies, and of course, customer service. Many governmental entities, just by way of example, implement Lean Six Sigma into their own organizations. The city of Grand Rapids, they reduced their permitting process from 16 days to one day by implementing lean methodologies. In the city of Kalamazoo, they have quite a few examples, however, one that I noted was they implemented lean methodologies within Human Resources for their talent acquisition process. And I did also wanna show you guys a photo that was featured in the Macomb Daily from our press conference that was held this last Friday. So, Mayor Taylor is pictured speaking, and standing behind him is the Macomb Community College's President Jim Sawyer. We have Mr. Vanderpool, myself, and our new community relations director, Melanie Davis. So, this is a very exciting program and opportunity for everybody involved, and we're looking forward to this program going live this coming up September. That's gonna be the first, you know, first session for us and for Macomb. The program will run annually, allowing for roughly 40 employees to participate year after year. So, next up, we have our executive leadership training. So, newly budgeted this year, five leaders in the organization will have an opportunity to embark on executive leadership training, and the five submitted, so we'll have a leader going to Creative Collaborative Solutions Innovations in Governance at Harvard Kennedy School. Another one is going to be going to Government Finance Officers Association Leadership Academy at the College of Charleston. Emerging Leaders Program, becoming a transformational leader at the University of Michigan Ross School of Business. Another leader is going to be attending the Strategic Leaders Program, also at University of Michigan Ross School of Business. And then, another leader is going to be attending the HR Executive Education Certified Labor Relations Leader at Michigan State. And as mentioned, we also have our learning management software through Knowledge City. The learning management software allows employees to have access to a library of over 13,000 trainings in various topics. This was also newly budgeted for us with this fiscal year, and we went live with the software at the end of July, and so far, over 50 trainings have been completed by employees. Many employees are utilizing Knowledge City as part of their sabbaticals, and this training resource is available to all employees all the time. Employees receive a certificate of completion when they complete a training through Knowledge City. Managers have access to trainings as well, and they can actually assign trainings to their employees, and we also have the capability of uploading our own training courses and materials into Knowledge City. Now, in addition to that, employees even have a Knowledge City icon on their desktop so they can click right on the icon to access Knowledge City. So, what's next for Sterling U? Where are we headed? So, while the Sterling U platform has only been established within the last two years, we look at this as though the doors are still open for other training opportunities. We wanna keep the momentum going and allow employees to grow professionally. We will be vetting other programs, such as the Disney Way, which is a customer-centric cultural program, along with other program training opportunities. This has really gotten employees thinking outside the box and providing us with unique and innovative training ideas, which has been very refreshing and exciting to see employees wanna get involved and not only think about their own professional goals, but they're also thinking about the organization as a whole. Adding value like this and opportunity for our employees has a direct impact on not only their professional well-being, but also an impact to our customers, our residents and businesses. So, thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
And Mayor, I just wanted to, in closing, thank yourself and the city council for support of the Sterling U Program. It's a very unique program. It's something that Sterling Heights itself created and branded on our own. It's something that I know our mayor had the chance to highlight on the national scale before the US Conference of Mayors, and it certainly received some attention there. And it's so important, as Ms. Baldwin said, to be implementing programs like this, to ensure that we are consistently implementing best practices and doing all that's possible in the spirit of continuous improvement, so I thank you again for support of the program. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. The next item on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on the Consent Agenda with the omission of Item 6L? Council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, Mr. Neal wants to speak. Come on up, Mr. Neal.
I wanted to talk about, one thing I was talking about was, I noticed there's a couple things in here about roads, especially, particularly, I M D. And what I was concerned about is, and I've noticed, I just noticed today, driving down 17-mile road, coming from Shaner to, what was I, Shaner to Van Dyke, I notice cracks and seams. I'm wondering, when we put asphalt down, is there any guarantee or any, in length, I know, I've seen this in other roads, and I noticed this is just done, I believe, last year, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's a year old, it's already cracking, it's already, you know, splitting up, I mean, is there any guarantee? When we have these projects done, is there any guarantee of longevity? For example, I remember talking, on a Facebook site, I was talking to some people that, for a group that, you know, talking about the roads for the entire state, and saying that we should have a program where we hold contractors accountable, so we're not just fixing the same roads every five or six years. And that's really what I wanted to talk about. I mean, 'cause we can see this with many, many other things, I mean, and then there's a lot of talk about people saying, "Well, we fixed the road, oh, that's just great," you know, I don't know if this is true, but people, you know, snidely say that, "Oh, well, that's great, you know, guarantee of work, you know, they fixed the road, you know, five or six years, they can just fix the same road again." But, I mean, with all the miles of roads, if we could fix the same roads over and again, over again, like for instance, there's a street in my neighborhood, it's a cul-de-sac on Sunset by Candlewood. It's been fixed, and I talked to some of my neighbors who have lived there for 40, well, probably since the neighborhood was built, over 40 years, and, you know, it's been done like in the last five years, three times, and that's just amazing. And not just the cost, my thing about the time, it takes a considerable amount of time to dig it up, to repair it, or even just resurface it, and all that work could be done on another neighborhood road, all that energy, all that money could be spent on other streets. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Neal. Anyone else on the Consent Agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a consideration item to adopt a resolution urging the Michigan Legislature and Governor Gretchen Whitmer to create a long-term sustainable strategy to repair and maintain Michigan roads that does not jeopardize local government funding. We have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Mrs. Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kachubski, and members of council. The Sterling Heights City Council has prioritized road reconstruction by investing significant budgetary dollars into both major and local roads, but it's not enough. In order to solve this problem long-term, a significant increase in resources is needed from the state of Michigan. This need has been recognized by the governor, who has put forth a proposal to raise $2.5 billion annually for roads. Although we applaud the effort by the governor to solve the road funding crisis, the plan in its current form will actually hurt road funding for Sterling Heights. The resolution before you recognizes the governor's efforts, but asks for a more equitable distribution of the funds raised and for a sustainable strategy that considers best practices such as reduced weight limits, quality control, and the impact of increased fuel efficiencies. First, a brief summary of the plan that was submitted in the current state budget proposal. The proposed plan raises $2.5 billion through a 45 cent per gallon increase to the gas tax. For the state of Michigan, Sterling Heights would receive an additional $665,000 annually from the new gas tax. However, a key point that has not been talked about much is that the proposed plan also eliminates a planned transfer from the state general fund to the roads of $275 million in fiscal year 2021. Sterling Heights will lose $1.2 million of anticipated funding from the elimination of that transfer, and these two together would result in a net loss for Sterling Heights of over $600,000 in the current proposal. So, you may wonder why Sterling Heights only receives $665,000 of the $2.5 billion in new funding. And that's because the proposed distribution of the new funds is very different from the current distribution method of road funds that we commonly refer to as the Act 51 formula. The proposed new formula distributes 70% of the funds to state-owned roads, 15% to counties, and only 6% is left to be divided amongst the rest of the municipalities. And you can see here that this new formula is very different from the Act 51 formula, in which the state would receive only 39% of funds, the counties would receive 39%, and the municipalities would receive 22%. And also, this formula is weighted heavily towards cities that have freeways, which is why cities like Warren and St. Clair Shores, and even Burton, would receive a significantly more funds than Sterling Heights. This chart summarizes the effect of the current road funding proposal on Sterling Heights. For fiscal year 20, in which the gas tax would only be partially implemented, Sterling Heights could expect to receive an additional $285,000 in road funding. That's enough to, that's a 2% increase over our current level, and it's enough to fix about a quarter mile of road. Under the Act 51 formula, we would have received an additional $2.7 million, a significant difference. And in the following year, when the gas tax will be fully implemented, we would, we would see a nearly $6.4 million additional funding via the Act 51 formula, as opposed to actually losing funding of $600,000 under the proposed model. And we are not the only city that would either lose money or receive only a small increase under the proposed plan. The city of Roseville shown here would also lose money in 2021 versus receiving an additional $2.5 million under Act 51. And here's Cadillac, now, they would still see a small increase under the proposed plan, but a significantly larger one if the Act 51 formula was used, and a similar situation in Escanaba. And these are just samplings of how few communities would fare under the proposed funding formula. So, we all know the governor's plan is currently just a proposal, and so here are some other ideas that have been floating around, although none of these have been formally introduced. So, one is to phase out the sales tax on gasoline and replace it with a higher gas tax dedicated to fixing roads. So, this would be a cost-neutral plan for the consumer. But the sales tax that you pay on gasoline currently doesn't go to roads, it's distributed to schools and local governments via revenue sharing. So, although this plan might result in more road dollars for Sterling Heights, there is a real possibility that would be offset by a reduction in revenue sharing, and there is currently no firm plan on how that revenue that we would lose from the sales tax would be replaced. Another idea you may have heard of involves the issuance of pension bonds to fund, excuse me, function, pen, issue pension bonds to fund the state pension system. So, this proposal suggests that we, the state could save $900 million, would be freed up by replacing the required pension contribution with a bond payment instead. Now, this idea is problematic because its success hinges upon earning a higher rate of return on the bond proceeds than you would pay in bond interest. And theoretically, you could end up down the line having a bond payment and a contribution to the pension fund if the returns didn't come in quite right. And for these reasons, the Government Finance Association of America actually recommends against using bonding to fund pension plans. against using bonding to fund pension plans. And a third idea that just has been mentioned is allowing counties and larger cities to levy their own gas taxes and vehicle registration fees to pay for roads. So, no matter what the solution, the governor and the legislature finally agree upon, it will not impact the need for the Safe Streets renewal in order to continue the progress on our neighborhood streets. So, as you can see in this graph, the city has invested significant dollars since 2015 in improvements of our neighborhood streets. Now, the amounts in purple, the purple portion of the graph represents the funding that has come from the Safe Streets Millage, and that represents over eighty percent of the budgeted dollars for reconstruction. The blue and the red portions of the graph represents the funding that currently comes from the state through Act 51. And the blue portion, which represents most of the funding, actually only covers the maintenance on the local streets, and there's really only a small portion that would be left for reconstruction. So, without the Safe Streets Millage, there would be a significant reduction in the number of local streets that would be reconstructed over the next ten years. So, the bottom line is that most of the increased gas tax from the current proposal would go to state and county roads. Sterling Heights would expect to see about a $600,000 annual decrease in major road funding. The current proposal does not include any additional funding for neighborhood streets, and the plan is simply not sufficient to cover our road funding needs. And the renewal of safe streets will be critical to continue the progress we have made in reconstructing our neighborhood streets. So, I hope this presentation demonstrated why city administration prepared this resolution for council consideration, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Varney. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, okay, Mr. Neal.
I know something, I found this quite interesting. If you could please answer the question. Back to your slide about showing the graphs, it goes down. Then in 2018, it goes up, but I thought in 2018, I wonder if that's because in 2018 there was a mail-in that was implemented by Mr. Vanderpoel and Mr. Taylor, I remember they were on TV calling our country, saying our city looks like a third-world country. I wonder if that's why it goes fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and then it goes nineteen. So, I'm wondering, if you're saying that the Safe Street Millage is so necessary, it's so proportionate, and I also remember, Mr. Vanderpoel in his report talking about the Safe Street Millage, saying that it's only a, something, something like, out of like twenty-four million, it's only like two or four million. So, how is it the majority, how is it the most needed, necessary portion of it, which is only a small percentage? I mean, two or four million out of, let's say, four million out of twenty-four million is, you know, a very small percentage, not even fifteen, twenty percent, if I, I'm not doing math, you know, that great at math, but I know it's not a large percentage of twenty-four million. Anybody can figure that out. I'd like more of a question of, answer to the graph example, you know, why does it, why does after the Safe Street Millage is implemented, why does it go down? And then why does it in 2018 go up, and why in nineteen does it go back down again? Also, I remember when this was promoted and passed, I remember actually, I think it was passed in, well, yeah, it was passed in November, and I remember in January, there was an announcement from the city that everybody in City Hall was getting a raise substantially, and I thought that was amazing that, right after the Safe Street Millage was passed, almost everybody in City Hall, in City Hall workers, including the city clerk, well, you weren't here at that time, got a raise. Remarkable. I wonder how much of that money came from the Safe Street Millage? And do we have a breakdown of how much of the Safe Streets goes to fire, police, and roads? Thank you.
Anyone else under this item? If not, Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco. Mr. Neal, please. Mrs. Zarco, please.
Resolved to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Neal, you had the floor. The floor is no longer yours. Please, thank you. Mr. Neal, we're not going to argue back and forth with you. You're out of order. If you continue, you're going to have to leave the meeting, okay? So, please. Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to adopt the resolution urging the Michigan Legislature and Governor Gretchen Whitmer to create a long-term, sustainable strategy to repair and maintain Michigan's roads that does not jeopardize local government funding and considers other best practices such as reduced weight limits, quality control, and the impact of increased fuel efficiency.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Varney for the presentation, certainly, we, we've been talking about this for a while, and it, this needs to be, we need to do something because we know that we're going to lose money. Most of us here have seen the presentation that the governor has, that the governor is doing all over the state, at least four times, at least four times we've seen it. So, we are certainly understood it probably the first or second time, the impact that it was going to have on, on us. I think if something were written that would say, with this new formula, that, would that, what would happen is that cities would either get the new formula or the formula that we use for Act 51, whichever is greater, if it was moved forward like that, then we know that we would at least get the money that we have been getting previously. So, and I don't think that's going to happen either, but I do know, I think we'll get the attention not just of the governor and of the legislator, but the entire state, because a city of our size, putting forth a resolution like this certainly is a statement, and I think it needs to be done. So, nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt, anything?
I have nothing to add.
Counsel, anyone with any discussion? Mr. Radke?
I completely agree with Councilwoman Zarco. I think it's amazing that, that the fourth, soon to be the third largest city in the state, would lose money under the governor's road funding plan. We already have too much infrastructure, and we're building more and more, and I, I feel like money is going to places that don't have infrastructure and are building it. That's not a way to sustain what we have. And just the idea that the places where people live are getting less money while places where people don't live are getting more, it just doesn't make sense to me. I hope that the governor and the legislature comes together with some kind of solution that actually works for where people live. Because in Sterling Heights, we're doing a tremendous amount out of our own pocket to try to fix the roadways, and the idea that we're going to be even further short-changed by the state is amazing. The state just lost a lawsuit, saying that they had short-changed us a ton of constitutional revenue-sharing money for almost a decade now. And the idea that they're going to further come out of our pockets, and we're going to have to go to the residents to ask for more money for safe streets, more money for police, more money for, more money for everything, because the state is short-changing us, to lose half a million dollars next year is insane. So, I hope that the governor reads the resolution and comes to a solution that will work for all the residents of Michigan, not just where people don't live, but where people do live. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm going to speak on this. So, I think I purchase, between my wife and I, I think we purchase about fifteen hundred gallons of gas per year, sometimes forty-five cents, that's $675 in additional cost for our household, and there are many, probably many that drive more and many that drive less. I might be above average in how much I drive, or how much our household drives. But, let's just say it's somewhere around four hundred or five hundred dollars per household in Sterling Heights for the average driver, and we're going to end up with less money. You know, I did calculations of what if we passed a road millage in Sterling Heights that raised everybody's gas taxes four hundred or five hundred dollars a year, it would, there would be an incredible amount of roadwork that could be done in Sterling Heights. Now, I'm certainly not proposing that, and I'm not saying we should do that, but what I'm saying is that if we're going to be spending two hundred, four hundred, eight hundred dollars, or some people, a thousand dollars more a year on gas taxes, and none of it is going to be going to Sterling Heights, in fact, less money than if we didn't raise the tax at all, that's totally, completely unacceptable to me. And I give the governor kudos for trying to solve this problem. I don't think there's any way we can just cut our way out of it, there has to be some sort of new revenue, but this is not the formula. If we, we thought Public Act 51 was bad, this is worse. So, we can't replace a bad formula with a worse formula, it makes no sense. As my colleagues have said, we are sick of being a donor community, and I know, I've spoken with, with our state representative Nate Shannon on this issue, and I can tell you, he's up there fighting the good fight and making sure that his colleagues in Lansing know that this is not going to work for the residents of Sterling Heights. The governor's plan has to be changed. Forty-five cents is a non-starter for most people, just wait till they find out it's not going to trickle down in any meaningful way to, to our roads here, it's, it's downright ridiculous. So, you know, the things he's hearing, or former Councilman Shannon, now state representative Shannon, is hearing, well, your residents drive in other parts of the state, and they leave Sterling Heights. Well, you know what? A lot of people leave their city to drive through Sterling Heights, okay? A lot of people drive through Sterling Heights from the northern Macomb County communities to get to Detroit, or to get to Warren. A lot of people in Warren drive through Sterling Heights to get to where they need to be. A lot of people drive, look at our roads, look at sixteen mile road in Rush Hour, look at Mound, Van Dyke, all of them, it's very crowded, it's very difficult. So, don't tell me that we drive out of state, so we need to subsidize those folks. The folks who are driving out of state through Sterling Heights, you know, they don't take that into account either. So, so, there's just no way, and I applaud the administration on the presentation by Mrs. Varney, if you could just, Mrs. Varney, so, Mr. Neal brought up, and if you want to bring that slide back up and kind of explain, just so, so the people at home know.
Sure.
First and foremost, everyone in City Hall did not get a raise in January of 2014. That's, that's, that's an easy thing to prove, and I'm happy to prove it, but I don't think, I don't think that it needs to, because I think most people who are paying attention know what was going on in 2014 here. But, if you, if you could explain what's going on here, Mrs. Varney.
Sure. So, first of all, this graph only represents neighborhood streets. So, the millage that was referred to, that was raised last year, that where we increased the taxes by one mil to raise four million dollars, every single penny of that went to major roads. So, that has, that is not represented in this slide at all. So, the thing you got to, the thing to understand is that these represent, how much dollars did we actually spend in a particular year? It's not necessarily equal to how much dollars we brought in, in a particular year. So, if you take, say, for example, 2017, we spent four million dollars, I don't know off the top of my head, we must have had a few million dollars left in fund balance that then we rolled over and spent on projects in 2018. So, seeing the charts goes up and down is just a reflection of when we actually spent the dollars that were raised. If you look at the purple, that represents the portion related to the Safe Streets Millage, you can see it's pretty, pretty consistent in the size of it. Again, we raised from, you know, three to three and a half million dollars over the year through the Safe Streets Millage. So, if you looked at, let's just say you look at the 2020 budget, we're going to spend nine point two million dollars. The purple portion comes from Safe Streets, the green portion actually comes from a general fund transfer, so we do, when we can, supplement our local roads by money from the general fund. The red portion is from Act 51 that goes towards construction, and the blue portion is from Act 51 that goes for maintenance, like mowing the grass in the medians, watering, those kind of things. So, it's, this graph again represents when we spent the money, so there's a timing difference as to when the money actually comes into the city. We don't always spend a dollar exactly in the year. Construction takes time, we save it for the next year to do a bigger project, things like that.
Okay. And of the twenty-four, there was a slide earlier regarding twenty-four million dollars in roadwork in, in 2019, right?
Right. And that was, that was major and local roads, total spending, which again involved major roads, involved, last year, we did a bond for eight million dollars, we had the extra four million dollars we got from the tax increase, plus we transferred additional monies from the general fund. So, again, the, the majority of the money we spend on, on roads is major road money. So, when I say that the neighborhood streets would grind to a halt, because we're talking about just the local road portion, so if you took away that purple portion of the graph, and you take away the blue portion of the graph, because that's what we spend on maintaining the roads, a mil, I'd say about a million and a half dollars would be left annually to spend on neighborhood road reconstruction, which is, you know, two or three streets versus, you know, the amount that we're doing now.
So, to be clear, when we use that twenty, so for 2019, twenty-four million dollars, six of it is for neighborhood roads, six point three, and the other eighteen is on major roads.
Correct.
So, when we're talking about, with the Safe Street funding is just for neighborhood roads. So, the neighborhood roads, the percentage decrease would go from six point three to one, which is like you said, about eighty percent of the funding there, which is a significant hit. There would be virtually no neighborhood road maintenance money, repair money. So, thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
If I could just mention that, that the local, the Safe Streets portion too, of the neighborhood streets money goes into a separate local rub fund, so it can only be spent on neighborhood streets. So, we can not legally, and we do not, spend that money on anything except for local road reconstruction.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Varney. And, you know, I think it's, it's very important with what's coming up this November to let the residents know that there, even if this forty-five cent road gas tax increase goes into effect, it's not going to be any sort of way of solving our, our problems here in Sterling Heights. In fact, it's going to only exacerbate them. So, I appreciate the administration bringing this to our attention, and I can, I can tell you firsthand that we have had discussions with the governor and the governor's office, so they know what's going on here, and I hope this sends a clear message to those in Lansing and to other communities who are similarly situated throughout the state of Michigan. So, without any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is 6L from the Consent Agenda. This is to approve a grant agreement to conduct a shared path feasibility study between the city of Sterling Heights and the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments in the amount of $35,000, with a local match of $6,352.50. We will have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to give an overview of this agenda item first. This came about because the SEMCOG, the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, periodically has programming available to communities to apply for, for planning grants, and the planning grants are necessary to then be able to apply for an actual construction grant, whether it be from SEMCOG, or from MDOT, or perhaps even a federal grant of some sort. So, recently, we became aware of the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Program. This is just a one-time program, this isn't regularly available, but it's for creative, non-motorized transportation improvements across Southeastern Michigan. And we looked at our non-motorized transportation plan, and looked at various needs and gaps across the city that connect to other regional areas. To qualify for this grant, there has to be connectivity with other jurisdictions. So, we quickly realized that we have a need along Dobree, where there is some existing sidewalk, but there are some large gaps along Dobree, and there is no real good connectivity to other communities like Rochester Hills, Troy, the city of Utica, Jimmy John's Baseball Field, or even a, a connecting node to Heritage Park, which then connects to our many miles of bike hike trail system throughout not only Sterling Heights, but all the way out to Metro Park, and also up to Stony Creek and, and the Orchard Trail and areas of trailway north of the city. So, we applied for this planning grant, and thankfully, SEMCOG approved it. The grant is in the amount of $35,000. The city's local match would be $6,352.50. And essentially, the, the planning grant would allow us to hire an engineering firm, in this case, HRC, that we do a lot of work with, and they would prepare concept drawings of what a improved sidewalk system would look like from Dequender, between Dequender and Utica Road. Branches. and Utica Road, branching off a Utica Road in two directions. One option going down, it would be southeast Utica Road and connecting into, as I mentioned, the Heritage Park area, which is directly connected to our park system. And another point, branching off, going into downtown Utica, small branch, if you will, and connecting with Jimmy John's Field. The lion's share of this would all be in Sterling Heights. So, once the concept plans are completed then, and all the planning is done, then the city would possibly be eligible for what's called a Transportation Alternative Program Grant, which then may fund actual construction of this improved pathway. That's an entirely separate grant process that would have to come before City Council, would have to also go before any other participating jurisdictions, including the city of Utica, and that would be an entirely separate process. As soon as we would anticipate being eligible for actual construction might be a year or so from now, once this is complete, and then actual construction starting probably the following year. So, you know, probably best-case scenario is this path might be a couple of years off. There is some sidewalk right now along Dobree that has been installed with the development as it's been constructed up there, which is a requirement of our ordinance to fill in various gaps. It remains to be seen if that sidewalk would remain, because that's five-foot sidewalk up there, and under this planning grant, and to be eligible for any state or federal grants, it'd need to be a 10-foot walk. So, it remains to be seen if we would add to that sidewalk or actually have to replace it, but if we did have to replace it, the property owners wouldn't be charged in that particular case, because that has already been paid for through the development, so this grant would actually pay for that part of it. So, again, just in summary, this would complete a major gap problem in our city. It would connect to a number of regional nodes, a number of other jurisdictions, and would improve non-motorized transportation options for residents, not only in our northwest quadrant of the city, all those newer developments up there, but also some of the newer development going on and anticipated at Mound and M59. For example, we have a hotel that's scheduled to be constructed very soon in that area, and, you know, it's not inconceivable that those individuals would want to use pathway systems like this, obviously, they're very popular. So, I'd be happy to address any questions that the City Council has on this item and look forward to your feedback.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to approve the grant agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Southeast Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG, and authorized the mayor to sign all documents required on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I think that Mr. Vanderpoel has explained the process and what the intention is, so nothing further.
I agree. Anyone else on council? Mr. Radke.
I just wanted to say, I think this is a tremendous pathway. It fills a sidewalk gap that we have that is large. I also think it's a great connection to Jimmy John's Field and a way for people from outside of our county to hopefully come in and spend their dollars here. I'm in total support of this, and I think option one is preferable to option two, but if we could have them both, that'd be even better. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I don't think that this is the proper time to do this project, because we do have the Safe Street Millage coming up, and you're talking about sidewalks from Dequinder all the way to east of Mound Road, right to the railroad track. You said that this is, this grant is with other communities involved. That means Rochester, Troy, and Utica. Is Utica capable of following through on this? If this study is done, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, that all the plans are going to be laid out, and then we would apply for another grant, and that grant monies would be used for, and that's my concern. Because looking at the map here, it says, makes note of the existing public restroom right there at the nature preserve. We have bathroom facilities there. I'm assuming that that means that that would be opened to the public. How do we plan on policing that? How is that going to be monitored? And there was another note there that said possible trailhead. That means that the plans are to put a trail through the nature preserve, or, as you have said in the past, around the nature preserve. I feel that if you're going to move forward with this, if that's what the intent is along putting that path in to connect it to Beaumont Hospital, also putting in a 10-foot walkway, that this should have a forum where the people that are going to be affected by this should be given the information exactly what's going to be done, so that if they have any input or if they have any objections to anything that you have planned here, that they have the opportunity to voice this. You said that this is something that would be two years down the road. I think it would be better to do your forums, talk to the people, get your input before you even do the study, because when you do the study, you can input the people's requests and delete what they don't want. So, I'm going to have to vote no on this tonight, because I don't think this is the right time to do this.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, the feasibility study is not the conceptual drawings of this plan, correct?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, the planning study is just that, it's concept plans, it's not construction plans, it's not, it's not the level of detail that we could use to bid out the project. It's just simply a planning document, a concept plan, that then allows us to pursue funding, to actually design it, get to construction documents, and determine ultimately, you know, if it is going to be constructed. It's simply a planning document right now that is required for any sort of grant applications moving forward.
And before anything would be moved forward, it would be brought before council, and at that point, we would also have the option of having meetings with the residents and getting input, correct?
Yes, Councilwoman Schmidt, that is correct, and I just want to highlight that on Dobree, where there is multifamily residential right now, there is sidewalk that exists already in front of those multifamily areas. The largest gap area is actually east of Mound. So, in that area, there is not residences, those are all businesses up in there. So, in terms of direct impact to single-family homes, there really isn't any single-family homes along this route, but certainly, there would be ample opportunity. Not only would it have to come back to City Council at multiple points, number one, you would have to approve the Transportation Alternative Program Grant to even participate in that grant, so that's one approval from City Council. Then you'd have to approve the budget amount for actual construction, which would include our local share, and then you'd ultimately have to approve the bids that would come back. So, throughout that entire process, we would have time to engage with any affected stakeholders out there, and I do agree with Councilwoman Kosky that it would be a good idea to certainly do that as part of this process.
Okay. So, to Mrs. Kosky's point as far as this feasibility study, is it also going to cover putting a trail system within that nature preserve? Is that part of this study?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, no, at this point, it is not. You can see from the renderings that have been provided in the package that this just includes a 10-foot sidewalk down Dobree, the, from Dequinder out to Utica Road. Well, and then, as the two options show, branching off in two directions, one toward Jimmy John's and one toward Heritage Park, which at that point is going through mostly Utica residential neighborhoods, but then connects to a 10-foot path that Utica already has from Heritage Park going to the tunnel under M59.
Okay. I think I'm very comfortable with the proposed before us. I think if there's any more intrusion into the nature center or the nature preserve or anything else, I think then the discussion, you know, should be made at that point. So, I am in support of the motion on the floor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else, council? I agree. I think this is a good proposal. I mean, what we're really just talking about here is a sidewalk. It's a 10-foot sidewalk, but it's a sidewalk, it's pretty common, it's throughout the entire city. We've got one on Dodge Park. It's not disruptive at all to the residents. It's in fact a tremendous benefit to the residents to have paths near their house, especially along a major road that's going to connect people from the different communities listed today. So, I'm in favor of this. It's a very, very conceptual stage right now. It's a very minimal expenditure of money in order to find out whether we can qualify for grants to construct this. As somebody who uses the paths and has been up by Jimmy John's Field, this would be a great addition to it. So, I'm looking forward to seeing where this can take us, and I think it's definitely the right thing for our community. So, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no passes, motion carries five to one, and we will move on now to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Ms. Ty.
Hi, I'm Joyce Ty. I know most of you. Most of you remember about five years ago, we had that massive flood on August 11th. I ended up having over $38,000 damage in my basement and over three feet of water. Of course, that wasn't insured. In the meantime, I found this little gadget, $15. It's called a backwater, but this is a backwater device, or it's called a check valve. You can just buy this and pop them in your drains in the basement. So, if you've got two drains, it's 30 bucks. And I got this at Menards, and I'm sure they have them at Home Depot and Lowe's also. But it allows water to go down. It doesn't allow the sewer to back up though, which obviously is what happened when we had that massive flooding. And so, recently, I had a water heater rusted out, and at least the water could go down, and I haven't had anything back up since. I don't ever want to go through that again. One more thing, we have the 2019 Beautification Awards coming up, and the deadline is this Friday. So, if anybody wants to submit their names, their pictures of their homes, or somebody that you know, take pictures of them, send them in to City Hall, and we have a lot of categories, like residences, multifamily churches, all religious buildings, commercial, industrial, gas stations, we got it all. So, we'd like to see a lot of entries for that. And one more thing, to show my support of the Safe Streets Millage, I got a few of these little Snazzy t-shirts, and if anybody wants to get one, they have a lot of different colors and styles and messages. You can just go to, on Facebook, Sterling Heights Police Department, and they'll take care of your order from there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ty. Anyone else under communications? Mrs. Early.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city manager and residents, and Jasmine Early. After driving by most of the roads under the local road concrete reconstruction program 2019, we discovered that other streets are experiencing the same driveway approach issues as on Chelilin Drive. After a long-awaited response from our city engineering department, residents on Chelilin received a letter from Andrew Conklin stating that in affected instances, quote, "The city will replace the dry approach at the city's cost," end of quote. What does the city engineer mean, "city cost"? Does it mean that the city pays the entire bill or that the residents get to work, the work done at city's prices? Will residents on the other affected roads be given the same benefits as those on Chelilin Drive? For example, if a resident on a street did not know that the city will replace the approach and pay out of pocket to the same city's contractor or any other contractor for their impacted driveway approach, will the city reimburse these residents? One important matter that has not been addressed is how is the city making the contractor accountable for the original work, and in some cases, side jobs correcting the approaches? By accountability, we specifically mean addressing issues cited in city inspections. Did the company pull all necessary permits for correcting the approaches? Incomplete receipts information given to residents for out-of-pocket payments, and insistence on only cash payment ranging from $1,600 to $2,000. According to the letter dated on August 8th, this work will be completed when the road is fully open to traffic. Chelilin Drive has been fully open to traffic for at least two weeks, and no work is done. In addition, many of the residents in the other affected streets did not receive the letter of notification that the city will replace and pay, particularly some residents who already paid the city's contracting company. Is this a type of warmanship that residents are to expect, sorry? If we vote on the proposed millage this November to continue to fund the reconstructing project? We need answers, so we can be informed, voters. I will leave, I will show the copy here for the residents to see that was sent to the residents on Chelilin. In another note, I want to, I want you, please consider, take in consideration what I'm saying here. We need answers. I want to remind you, residents, this is a public announcement, changing subject, of the new resident forum coming up on Wednesday, August 28th, at 6:00 p.m. at the library. If people plan to attend the new residence, please call 586-446-2470. And I know it sounds far in distance, but I wish you a safe and enjoyable Labor Day, and please remember to get back to us for the answers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Early. Anyone else under communications? Mrs. Comer.
Hi, I'm Linda Comer, 23-year resident of Sterling Heights, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Vanderpoel. I'm going to bring up a little bit of old news, because I couldn't be here two weeks ago, and that's regarding the Sterling Fest. Oh my God, what a phenomenal time. And recently, I was at the splash pad and had a conversation with a woman who lives in Troy, and I was able to share about our Sterling Fest and about Dodge Park, the farmer's market. She didn't know a lot of things about our city, so now I'm looking forward to seeing her, hopefully, with her two children on Thursday at the concert, and I told her that Roscoe the Clown was going to be there, and so it's great to share these things about our city. And Mrs. Zarco, my hat's off to you, what an aim you've got, getting him, I don't know, four or five times, it was awesome to see that, so. Just how you say that.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Sure. Well, no, I didn't have aim. I have a question. I emailed someone in the city, I'm not going to say who, regarding cement in the sidewalks, and I never got a response. So, going forward, Mr. Vanderpoel, I'm just going to come here and ask you directly, because I can say you have always answered me, usually within 24 hours. So, I'll, thank you very much for that. I know that I've read that residents get tagged with their sidewalks, that they have to be replaced. So, my question is, does the city assist with getting contractors to do, like, if the residents want, one contractor to come into neighborhood so it's cheaper? Because my neighborhood's looking at doing some work, and we're trying to get information how the city does this. Are we on our own? Can you guys give us suggestions? So, I'm looking... Can you guys give us suggestions? So I'm looking for that. Secondly, I live in the Sterling Hunt Club, and for a small neighborhood, these people drive like Mario Andretti. So my question is, even though it's residential, can the speed limits be lower? So I have no idea if that can happen. And also, what do we have to do to get those radar speed signs? So maybe people, if they're aware that they're going 40 miles an hour, and there's kids, we have no sidewalks, so when they walk, you're in the street. It's just not safe. So, got that question. And lastly, this just came up today as I'm sitting here, because I've watched it from home, and I really get kind of agitated, because it's right in here where you can be called to order by the chair or council member if you attempt to engage the council or any member in debate. We're all supposed to be adults. We're all supposed to be able to follow these rules. Mr. Mayor, I've heard you call people out and say, "You're out of order, you're out of order, you're out of order." You're kind of like that parent that keeps saying something, but you don't do anything about it. In my world, it's not three strikes, you're out. That's only in baseball. After two times, to me, people should be removed. This should be respected. So that's just my two cents about the behaviors that I have witnessed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Comer. Anyone else? Mr. Neal?
It seems like sidewalks are a very interesting topic tonight. And I hope, Mr. Vanderpoel, we talked earlier, I hope that you can remember what we talked about as well. What I'd like to discuss is Shana Road. And it's a perplexing moment, because I remember, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do remember back in the spring, you discussed that it was going to basically be a continuation from Plum Brook, approximately Plum Brook, to, I don't know, was it about 1.5 miles? In fact, I, driving today on Shana, I noticed the banner around Plum Brook by the bridge, and it says 1.5 miles construction. However, it doesn't start, you can even see on Shana, all the way up to 17 mile, you can see where they've marked markings on the road. But construction doesn't start until after Clinton River Road, where they're working on presently. And I've talked with several people about this and several businesses about it as well. And people have noticed that you're doing the, I know this is a county issue, but I hope that you cannot just simply punt to, you know, oh, that's the county's fault, because you have, I'm sure you have influence in the county. But the point is, they're doing basically the best part of Shana, which is interesting. The worst parts of Shana between Canal and Hall, M-59, I'm old, I still call it Hall Road, are not being touched. From Plum Brook, including the Plum Brook Bridge, which is, you have rebar showing and holes, to Clinton River Road is not being touched. And you can even, while I was turning on the 17 from Shana, you could even hear as cars hit the potholes and hit the roads, you can hear the frames busting, you can hear this, well, I've done mechanical work, I know what to listen to. But anyway, so you can even tell it's in bad shape yet. You know, I'm surprised that the worst part of Shana is not even being touched. And I remember, Mrs. Schmidt, I believe you also talked, you know, this was much earlier in the year, correct me if I'm wrong, and I think it was on Utica. Unless I was wrong about the current project in Utica. I thought you mentioned that the area brought by Utica from Shana to Hayes was going to be touched on. I remember, I thought you remember saying that that is a bad area, and you're right, it is a bad area. And I do remember seeing a banner sign, yet the banner's gone. And I'm wondering what happened to that project? Or was I just completely, because the banners, when you turn on from Shana going northbound to Utica, that the banner was there. So I'm wondering what happened to that project? Or was it bunted, or did they put the banner in the wrong spot? Don't know. And I've seen people from the city say, "Oh, well, that's a county issue, that's a county issue." Well, did the county put up the banner? Was it the county that was sitting here? Was it the county that was sitting in Mr. Vanderpoel's spot? No. Was it the county that was sitting in Mrs. Schmidt's spot? I don't think so. So. And also, in regards to what the previous speaker we just talked about, about respect and accountability and about all this stuff, I mean, I don't think you really see the stuff that goes behind the scenes, where we have Rat, Mr. Radke, and that's probably the reason that I'm here today, because he was basically kind of, you know, calling me a chicken for not coming to a city council meeting. So if you don't like me here, talk to him. He wanted me to come, he invited me. But you can see, and I know I'm not the only person. I mean, you have, you know, Mr. Garrettby, you know, talking about, from the city, and many other people from the city, basically saying that people like Mr. Jefferson should be lynched. And I remember, we talked about that, and you threw people out, including Mr. Jefferson. So there was not a three strikes, you're out rule. And I've also noticed that besides, he's almost one of the few people that's been, you know, thrown out of meetings. It's amazing. So you really hate him. So it's not, you know, so you, you're not just, you know, the parent that doesn't do anything. And, but you're also the type of person that acts like, you know, the little kid-
All right, thank you, Mr. Neal.
-over on the internet, and you attack people-
All right, that'll be all. Thank you, Mr. Neal. Your time is up. Appreciate your comments tonight. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak under communications from citizens? Not to close that portion and move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything?
Mayor, I can respond to a couple of comments quickly.
Certainly, thank you.
First, there was some question about drive approaches that have to be removed with reconstruction projects. In some cases, the elevation of the road has to be changed and does not then line up with the drive approach. And when that happens, the city does pay for the new drive approach to reinstall it and to get that drive approach to the correct grade. Obviously, the homeowner shouldn't be responsible in that case. So, so we do handle the approaches in the limited cases where that actually happens. There was, Ms. Comer mentioned that there may be a need to look at sidewalks in given areas, including the Hunt Club. And we do have what's called our sidewalk repair program. We do that through a special assessment, but essentially what we do is give the residents the choice of either replacing the sidewalk on their own or using our contractor, which we bid out a significantly large sidewalk replacement program. And through economies of scale, we're able to get very favorable pricing. So it's very cost-effective to use the city's contractor in that case and participate through the city's sidewalk program. And we also offer financing with that program also. So that's an option. I have to look at the applicability to the Hunt Club. I don't know the condition of those sidewalks, but we'll certainly take a good look at it and see if that might be an area we need to get included in the program soon. There was also a comment about Shana Road. There has been a flip-flopping of projects on Shana Road. So the project that's underway currently was actually scheduled for next year. And the county was able to accelerate that particular section from Clinton River up to just north or just south of Canal Street, which is very bad, up in that Canal section, 19-mile road. Certain areas of that roadway are very bad. However, they are delaying the portion from Plum Brook to Clinton River until next year. There are complexities with that particular project, including significant bridge work that is requiring a higher level of review from MDOT and more detailed construction documents, and a more cumbersome process, if you will, for design and build out that actually precluded that project from getting completed this construction season. But that will be done next year. So at the end of the day, all of Shana will be done, with this last segment being completed in a couple of years, which would be from Canal up to M-59, which is a simple mill and resurfacing up in there. So it is correct that there has been a flip-flopping of sections of Shana, if you will. But we're confident that next year, the Plum Brook section of Clinton River will be done. But I will add, the county does plan on, and you see the white markings on the road already, doing significant repair work on that section to get through the winter so we're not having tire blowouts and the like that happened last winter. So that particularly bad section is just south of Clinton River, southbound, down by 17 Mile Road, which is mostly southbound, but also some northbound sections, and then down by Plum Brook Road as well. So you'll see some significant repair work yet this construction season in that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Chris Schubski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, any reports from your business? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Radke?
I had three quick things. First, to the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, I know that a resident asked about pavement warranties. I was wondering if you would address that and give the residents, I know we have them, so.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, yes, thank you for reminding me. I meant to comment on that. The city does have a two-year warranty program for all of our, all of our road work. And that starts at the time the project is finalized and signed off on. That's very typical. It actually exceeds the state's warranty program. We're well in compliance with the new state warranty program. So we've had that in place for a number of years. I don't know that you'd find any community in Michigan or across the country that would have a longer warranty period. It just is incredibly expensive to go up to five years. It just, the cost-benefit analysis just isn't there. So two years is really the industry's standard. Thank you.
Secondly, I was, without objection, I'd ask that the city administration prepare a report for city council on affordable housing. I know that Ann Arbor and Ferndale both have adopted affordable housing ordinances. I was hoping that we just could get a background report to the city council within, say, six months to kind of discuss our options and how we could move forward with that.
Okay, well, do you, can you be any more specific about what the scope, I mean, have you talked to Mr. Vanderpoel or Mr. Schubski?
I have talked with Mr. Vanderpoel about this. It, basically, a lot of communities are adopting ordinances to basically mandate affordable housing projects as part of new developments. We have several developments coming into Sterling Heights, building very expensive homes that are not really affordable for young families. And we've been trying to have more young families move into our community. So I was wondering, what have other communities done, including both Ferndale and Ann Arbor, to encourage affordable housing, and how, how successful it's been in their communities?
So are you just asking at this point for the administration to prepare some sort of a report of what other communities in Michigan-
Are doing and suggestions that we might adopt.
Okay. Is there any objection to that limited scope? Okay. I think there's their direction?
And third, without objection, I'd like the administration to craft a budget amendment to have the, our Sterling Heights City Council agenda printed in the Sterling Heights entry going forward. Right now, it's not printed in the paper, and I'd like to have it printed in the paper going forward.
Okay. They'll bring that forward, I suppose, and tell us what it would cost, what the budget amendment would cost, and we can vote on that. I don't see any objection that I have. Anybody else? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Radke?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at Dodge Park today with my daughter and grandson, enjoying the amenities of the park. And I noticed there's some rather significant wear and tear on some of the playground equipment. And through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, I'd like to know that the Parks and Rec Director and his staff go through at the end of the season or at some period in time where they look at the equipment and make the necessary repairs.
Mr. Vanderpoel, anything?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Councilman Yanez, we do, just by way of background, we do go through, especially Dodge Park, frequently. We have to tend to the basketball fencing that often gets knocked down some, and we have to put up nets regularly, and we have to scrub the boards in the soccer field area. We do that consistently. But to the extent we're missing anything on the playground equipment, I want to take a good look at that. Maybe after the meeting, you could give me the exact location. I want to make sure we're getting everything covered. But we do it on a regular basis. We don't necessarily wait till the end of the season, although some of it does have to wait till the end of the season if it requires significant painting and the like.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I had a resident contact me and ask me if our waste haulers and our centers are having any difficulties with the recyclables. That they heard that some of the recyclables, because there's no market for them, are being put into the landfills. Can you shed any light on that, or can you maybe research it and get back to counsel within our report?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Kosky, just a couple of sort of off-the-cuff comments, and then we're certainly going to be following up with more information. As many have heard, there, there is a very, what do I want to say, constrained market for recyclables right now, in, in large part because China isn't accepting many of the recyclable materials that they used to accept. So the market is very limited. As a consequence of that is that waste haulers have to be far more rigid in terms of how they define contaminated recyclable materials. So a lot of times, unfortunately, any contamination is not making it to the necessary markets. Now, I've had a discussion with the mayor on this topic, and I think some other council members as well over the last few months. And what we plan to do very soon is working with GFL, really improving our outreach and informational material, making sure that residents fully understand what can and cannot be recycled at curbside or even dropped off at our two remaining drop-off centers. I, I think we really need to improve in that area and make sure we're doing all that we can to minimize recycling contamination, because that is becoming a big problem. So you can look forward to seeing much more information on this. And I know the DPW director is working hard to put together a public information effort, along with GFL and also our Community Relations Department.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not, just briefly on Shana Road, I will tell you that it's disappointing and frustrating for us at the city. And I know it is for the residents as well, because that portion of Shana is, is far worse than the one that's being done, although the one that's being done is certainly in need of repair. The city has worked diligently. We had a number of conference calls, one that I was involved in, with the director of the Michigan Department of Transportation, imploring them to do whatever could be done to lessen the reviews or expedite them. And it just unfortunately didn't work out. And we, we worked with the county to, to try to get that done. But what was going to end up happening was, they would, they were maybe going to be able to get started this year and finish it next year. And, and that isn't good for anybody, because then it's just torn up for the entire winter. And so unfortunately, that's the way it is, but it's not because of a lack of diligence on the part of the city or the county. And hopefully, we'll be able to get through with the temporary repairs that Mr. Vanderpoel talked about. And with any luck, maybe have a mild winter. But that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Removed and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.